2024, please rise to the glass.
Goodbye, the United States of America, to the Republic, which is its nation, their God, invisible, liberty and justice.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
And so I'm about to tell the comments. And before we begin, I want to read our statement of fact. Members of the public may address the school committee for about three minutes on school and educational matters. Other comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee practice does not respond or speak to speakers during the public period. We are here to listen. The superintendent's order will follow up on comments outside the meeting. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that the students be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review the school committee policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and no not discriminate or tolerate discrimination against students or employees and members of the identity group. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do you have any other comments today? Moving on. Superintendent's proposals and updates. And do we have any action items?
No action items this evening.
Monthly informational items?
Assistant Superintendent Dr. Kathy Harris Lindberg will provide a report. Please do succeed that ES.
Okay, this is the early report that I tried to make. If you want to, there have been a few changes in the time that I submitted it on Friday until today, yesterday, but they're good news. Hopefully, maybe they'll soon. This is requirement of receiving title funds. And I have to give you a bit of background, this history, there's a bit of understanding about law, and then there's some financials. And so part of this, we have to have an advisory committee member, parents guardian, community members, teachers, and administration, and a new part of this is that they like to present to school committees. That's the public comment time. Part of these advisory committees, we spoke about it, Dr. Ginn about the ESA, the ESDA, every student succeed that, review the various title program, how the funds are used, parents' right to know, family engagement, which is a requirement, McKinney Vento foster care, and then any feedback that you might have.
Do, sorry, how do parents, you know, find out about this and apply to be on the advisory committee?
So we put it on social media, we put it on the website, the principal sent it home in the nurse nurse. Trying to surround them. She's gone in the past. So we try and get it on the various manner. You know, do people show up? I mean, you'll find it out.
Is there a limit to how many parents could just?
And we always do like to have at least somebody from a title one school because of a lot of the so ESA, which I referred as, every student succeed that. And as part of ESDA, which is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, this was first introduced in 1965 by President Johnson in a trial, educational opportunity, this is more, we're on poverty. Title one is a large a large component of ESA. And basically, it intends to ensure that to close the achievement gaps, increase equity, improve the quality of education instruction, and increase outcomes for students. Title one is a federal grant. Funds are distributed based entirely upon the number of low income students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. So that's why a lot of times you'll have principals saying, you need to fill out this form. And it's because our numbers are based upon these forms that come in. Once the forms are distributed, once the allocation is distributed to schools, then the schools, if any student can receive funding, it doesn't matter the income level of the child at that point. So Title One is the purpose is to develop math and reading skills and encourage parental involvement in their child's education to develop problem solving skills. And so it's all academic based. We set goals for improvement, we measure students' achievement using the state assessments, and we provide supplemental services. So each child receives Title One must also receive direct instruction within the classroom. Part of the requirements also are that we have to engage parents and guardians in their child's learning. And we hear these peak events. These are events when we try to involve the parents and we show them things that they can do with their children at home so that their children will be actively involved and that parents can help them and help them understand what's going on. We are required to develop the parent's school compact and the principals do that usually in October with their PTOs for the most participation. And we have to develop family engagement policies. But each one of the title schools has one compact involved. This upcoming year, Abraham Lincoln Down East, Bind, Fairmount, and Mary Snow have some type of funding. That, this is new, Mary Snow did not have title funding last year. So that is a good thing. The bad thing is 14th Street is not getting funding. And again, it's all based upon initial free and reduced lunch numbers. So the percentage, we have to set goals. And so we set goals, we have a reading goal to math goal, and then we typically choose something else. These are the goals that we had last year. We did not make either one of the first two, what we did is make the third one. So we'll revamp what we're going to do for our goals, looking at a variety of data points and adjust based on what we're seeing now with the comprehensive use.
So what was the, if we didn't need to go, what did we, what was the percentage?
Well, it printed off, it doesn't have my note, I can get that to you. So they do have that. On the notes, can you see the notes on mine? I can't, I can't even know. I said a question, forgive me, on the last slide with the numbers of who qualifies for Title One. And for these changes, I always thought we had to fill out that paper on the first day of school. You do. Okay. That I would thought that would indicate where they're coming here. Who qualifies, but it did, that not. Each month, the Food Service Department has to keep a running track of the number of students who qualify for free and it does change. And there are different ways of being able to certify. You can certify through filling out that form. There's a direct certification, like if you receive certain services to the state of Maine, types of funding streams, like if you remain in stride, like for me, but there, there are direct certifications, you don't have to fill out that. And then people move in and they move out and some numbers change. So when I do the application, look through the various months and see which one will benefit us the most.
Thank you.
So for FY '25, we received almost $1.6 million in title funds, but this is about $3,000 less than last year. We primarily use our Title One fund to pay salary and benefits for Title Ones for teachers to purchase materials that will support that instruction, to pay the salary and benefits of our McKinney Vento and foster care ladies. Families that are right to know, they can ask this within any school. For the qualifications of the teachers that are working with the children and what they can ask for teacher certification with free help. If your child receives help from a parent professional, you can also ask what their certification is. There are two types of, I mean, there are two types of programming. It's called targeted assistance and there's schoolwide. Targeted assistance means that students have to qualify based upon a series of requirements that are laid out. Schoolwide, students can flex in and out based upon the individual needs of the students. We love being schoolwide, all our schools are schoolwide, except for Mary Snow, because Mary Snow just got, it just came back on and you have to apply for it. And it is a year process, so see where they're at. Students have to participate in a certain procedure, so like the main state assessment, they're required to just pay in this assessment to receive the money. If you did not receive the money. And so a lot of information from main state assessments are part of the title because of requirements of the the family engagement requirement that I talked to you about is we have to develop that policy. We have to develop a compact and we have to provide an opportunity for parents, guardians to provide feedback about we do offer parent engagement activities. And these are sort of this variety of events. If you see peak parents and educators celebrating on kids, these are amazing events. Have a pin to one, even if your child is not at the Title One school, check it out. The parent involvement goal, all title hold at least four peak events per year. We try to do one per quarter, so it's kind of spread out here, so the learning is ongoing. And sometimes some schools do more than one. I think Down East and Fairmount were shared with a number of more. We also have the goal that 80% of our peak project evaluations receive a three or a four on a four point scale, and we're well into the mid 90s. We do really well with those. Part of Title also has to fund McKinney Vento, this is homeless act, so it was enacted in 1987 by President Reagan, and it guarantees homeless students the right to a free, appropriate education. All students that are considered homeless from McKinney Vento can qualify for Title One, even though they don't necessarily test into it, but because we're schoolwide, all at once, it's not a big issue. We have to appoint a liaison right now, but it is Principal Four. Going to be somebody else, Principal is at 14th Street. The liaison works closely with school principals and house or social workers to confirm progress and ensure necessary supports and resources are available. These people work really hard to say that they're reaching to outside organizations to find help when families need the most. And also the liaison meets monthly with me and we go over various needs and things because I have some funding streams that can help these students lots. And we provide training where it's required or we
Question, um, is there a reason why McKinney Vento was tied to 14th Street?
14th Street is, the principal's position is not a full-time principal's position based upon the EPS formula that is with the, you know, state of Maine. And so to make that a full-time position, they have other duties that have been assigned in McKinney Vento foster. Foster care has all the same rights and privileges that McKinney Vento has. And basically, again, they can guarantee that students that are in foster care system can access that. Have to jump through some of them. We have the same type of meetings monthly. Title Two, the funds are to increase the academic achievement of students by improving the effectiveness of the teacher principals. So these funds are used for professional development. We often use them for class size reduction so that the class sizes can be smaller schools like Down East and Bind. This year, we received almost $300,000. But all of these funds, both Title One and Title Two are shared with the non-public schools that are in Bangor. Non-public schools in Bangor can choose to access them or not. They do have to follow the requirements of the law if they do access the funds. So some choose, some do not choose. And I'll get to that, the schools that access that. And I kind of already went over that. So here are the private schools that are in Bangor that have been off. So I'll thank Bangor Christian and Stillwater Academy access Title One funds and Title Two funds. John Bapp accesses only Title Two funds because they are high school and we do not provide Title One services at the high school level. And we do not provide Title One at the middle school or high school levels just because of the funding, it would just stretch up too. The United Servile Policy of Maine and the Penobscot Job Corps also have opted in, but both have declined to accept funding this year. I think United Servile Policy was getting like $2 this year. It wasn't worth it for the effort, so, but they, they have that option. So from those totals that I gave you, Title One takes about $43,000 from that number that I gave you, the 1.6, and from the 366,000 and a little bit more that goes out of tech. These are the next slide that you're not going to see. So on Friday, I was telling everybody, no, we're not getting any kind of free money. You have to reach a limit, a threshold of $10,000 and we are at $1,004. Close to yet so far. And then I opened up the report yesterday and it was like, whoa, getting $12,000. We're actually getting something. So this is for our multilingual learners. And this is the first time that the Bangor School Department has received any funding from the state for this. And we're very excited about this because they're funding, recognizing that our M L numbers are we have to use them for three purposes. The purposes are very clear. We had to do it for professional development, for providing a language instruction through this program, and basically for programming for students. We also received Title Four. And you have to provide one hundred over $50,000, you have to do four projects and the four projects are listed here. We get about $160,000. We start providing that by four. It often doesn't make sense, it doesn't get us a long wage because we have to do all four projects. And so you have the ability to move that to another title program. And so in the past, we have moved these to Title One so that we're able to provide more services that Title One. I am required to report to you, there's an ESA dashboard, the website is there, it provides district by school, district and state, so you can see what schools are doing. It reports out the number of teachers, number of students, ethnicity, where they scored on, not collectively what the scores from the state assessments. And these are the resources that I use or to give the information for you. Page of resources. And do you have any further? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Commissioners Conference Report. Rep. Robinson. Yes, I will share some information on the recent Commissioners Conference in June. So you do have a copy of my report in your packet. And this is the Commissioners Conference first annually, and I only attend that this past June, Dr. Tony Wagner was the keynote speaker. He's the Senior Research Fellow at the Learning Policy Institute. And the title of what he spoke about was Measure What Matters. So essentially, looking at the global changes in our society, the speed with which technology is advancing, society is shifting and changing. There is an increased focus on looking at competencies and skills that graduates are leaving schools and schools with, and ensuring that they match the skills and competencies that are needed in today's economy. So some schools have in the past embarked in one work similar to what Dr. Wagner spoke about, Portrait of a Graduate. And really, it becomes a, starts with, it can start with the community, multiple stakeholders, really looking at what do we want our Bangor School Department graduates to know and be able to do when they leave high school. And that collective effort can then trickle down through the school. So at the high school, how is that, you know, matching or aligning or is it being tweaked and modified? But it's, it's a full process and that can go all the way down.
I'm sorry, Dr. Robinson, may I interrupt you? I'm interested in Portrait of a Graduate. Is that a formalized initiative that requires X amount of stakeholders and objectives? Or is it just say, this is our big idea and how we want to use the framework to evaluate how our students are advancing?
Sure, that's a great question. At this point, it was presented as a framework, not anything specific that has more requirements still. It's something that I have embarked on in the past, just independently of anything. So I do have a little bit of experience there with that.
Yeah, thank you very much. It sounds like a great opportunity to have that sort of language around what you're looking for. So I just wondered if there was something more.
Well, I do know that what I learned coming in is Superintendent Tiger had set up a community forum for this Measure What Matters to happen. And I, I'll let everyone know what the date is on that, if that's been coordinated yet. But just opening up to the community to start that work and then, you know, go from there. So I did go attend to a few follow-up sessions. The first was with Dr. Wagner. So we took the keynote and then a group of superintendents statewide who joined that session, dug a little deeper and had some rich conversations around, you know, what this could potentially look like. And there are legislative updates, those are always a part of the conference. And then a session, the other session I attended was literacy on literacy. And that was presented by the Office of Early Learning. And it really focused on the tremendous brain growth development that occurs in young children and how that's such a critical period of time with learning and development. And really talking about the needs of young children to have opportunities to play and explore and practice. You know, their more language skills and build that conceptual knowledge to make sure that they're prepared. But then the MSMA, which is, you're probably familiar with, and you know, think of the the discussion right now is at all conferences, there will be a committee forming around with superintendents who are interested in looking deeper at ways to innovate within the public school system to ensure that we are meeting the needs of today's economy and making sure students are prepared. So I volunteered to be on that and further information will come once that all conference occurs in October.
Thank you, I'm right. Thank you, thank you very much for this report. I really enjoyed reading about what you learned. My only question was, you had a piece in there about Commissioner Meakin and the Maine Department of Education launching the initiative to address that child. Is that the same as the volunteer committee with MSMA or? No, the volunteer committee is separate. It's not necessarily connected. And there was, there wasn't a clear concise plan in June. It was Commissioner Meakin sharing that this is something they are working towards. That's exciting. I really love what you shared about that initiative. And so I guess we could just look for more information from the DOE or Commissioner Meakin on that, but absolutely, thank, that'd be really helpful to me if you were. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So moving on to report the reasons. We don't always, if I could just since there were so many administrative moves, if you could just buy a little context on this.
Absolutely. Of course, I, I'm just coming in, so I will say, first and foremost, this was a collaborative discussion and process that we embarked in to really look at the needs across schools, the needs of the district, and really looking at what the openings were and where we could ensure that movement could support the success of all of this. So I mean, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Just move.
No worries. Thank you, very well thought.
So I am reporting the following teacher and administrator reassignments for the school year 2024, 2025. Lindsay Chadbourne from social worker at Abraham Lincoln School and Street School, to the full-time social worker at Abraham Lincoln School and Street School. Deborah Dearborn from grade three teacher at Down East to grade five teacher at Fairmount. Jamie Gould from grade one teacher at Bind Street to Title One math teacher at Down East. There are a few additions that were not in the packet. And that includes Rose Pompey from multilingual teacher K three to multilingual teacher at the Bangor, Bangor High School. Kelly Hasselbrack from multilingual teacher at Bangor High School to special education teacher at Bangor High School. Casey Falcon from grade four teacher at Fairmount School to multilingual teacher K three. Daniel Chadbourne from principal at Mary Snow School to assistant principal at William S. Cohen School. Kristi Lord from principal from the faction at 14th Street to principal at Mary Snow's.
Very much. And moving on to report.
I'm reporting the following nominations for the 2024, 2025 for the year, for the school year. Zachary Ellis, assistant principal at Cohen. Jessica Bickford, social worker at Down East. Irma Strieves, school nurse, she's district wide. Matthew Leland, debate coach, Bangor High School. Samuel Picard, B-girl soccer coach at Cohen.
Thank you. So let's move on to the additional action items. And our first action item is the minutes of the beginning of June 12th. Can I get a motion?
So much.
Again. All in favor? Next, we have the financial report. The April 2024 financial report.
No?
Yeah.
Can we do this together?
I got it, thank you. So we've got the April 2024 financial report, the May 2024 financial report, June bids and nominations and the additional. Can I get a motion?
So. Second.
Five zero, thank you. Next, we have personality nominations and teacher nominations.
I am recommending the following teacher nominations for the 2024, 2025 school year with a one-year probationary contract. Alyssa Kubash, special education teacher, James M. Dowdy. Sarah Holteppel, music teacher. William S. Cohen. Alexa Bartley, music teacher, Fairmount and Mary Snow School. Jacob Dunn, special education teacher, Fairmount School. Kristen Shory, special education teacher, Down East School. Courtney Campbell, kindergarten teacher, Bind Street School. And these are additional items of but folks who are not in the packet. Haley Burgess, grade three teacher, Down East School. Jonathan Dowdy, special education teacher at James M. Dowdy School. Brooke Depew, French teacher, half-time at James M. Dowdy and half-time. Owen Asher Robinson, special education teacher at Down East.
Thank you. And
Move acceptance.
Second. All in favor? And moving on to administrators.
I'm recommending the following administrator nominations for the 2024, 2025 year with a one-year probationary contract. Jeanette Quark, principal of the Fairmount School.
I'm happy to move the motion. I have a quick comment on the question. Yeah. But I did make the motion.
Exactly.
As mentioned, I'm happy to support, but I'm just curious if you had any real details. Actually curious to know if this is your hire mostly, or if it was the previous superintendents and anything you would like to share about the hire.
Absolutely. We had several well-qualified candidates. And I conducted the interviews with a small team that I gathered knowing that I'm coming in brand new and connected with folks who had some, some deeper knowledge, making sure that we select the best candidate for the position. So after doing that, Dr. Quark was the recommended candidate. She comes to us from Massachusetts. She's actually here this evening. She had eight years of administrative experience. She's actually traveled yesterday, last night, from Massachusetts to be here today. And she does need to leave early for an appointment in the morning, but I'm thrilled, I'm really excited. She rose above the, in terms of candidate qualifications, and I feel like she will be an excellent fit for the district.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Second. Three other seconds, right now. Thank you. Right, and then the next question.
I'm recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for 2024, 2025. Daniel Picard, A-Boy soccer coach at William S. Cohen. Daniel Picard, A boys soccer coach at Williamus Cohen. Megan Bridges, the cheering coach, James F. Dowdy.
Again, okay?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah. And moving on to the second reading of
I'm recommending approval of the second reading of revised policies. Revised policy K D A, Public Information Program. Revised policy K D V, Public Right to Know, Freedom of revised policy K F, Community Use of School Facilities. Policy K G D, Community Use of Instructional Equipment Materials. Policy, revised policy K C D, Public Gifts of Patients to the School. Revised policy K H B, Advertising in the Schools. Revised policy K I, Visitors to the Schools. Revised policy K J A, Distribution of Non-School Material. Revised policy K L G, Relations with School Office, Resource Officer and Authorities. Revised policy K N A G, Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect. Revised policy L E C, Educational Research and Survey, Interviews, Analysis or Evaluation of Students, Families or faculties. Revised policy G D V nine, Supplemental Compensation Drive.
Can I get a motion? Second. All in favor? Thank you. And next we have donations.
Committee member Katie Bryden, she's your volunteer. Thank you. To James F. Dowdy School from Angelo's Pizzeria. Ten large pizzas for students, fun night, having a total dollar value of a hundred and sixty-five dollars. To James F. Dowdy School from Happily Ever After Entertainment Design, Music and DJ Services for Student Fun Night, having a total dollar value of two thousand. And to the Down East School from Hannaford Supermarket. Snacks, snacks for field day, having a total dollar value of two hundred. Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
So much.
Second. All in favor? And moving on to introduction items, we have the first reading of your guide.
I'm recommending the first reading of new and revised policies. Revised policy A C, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity and Affirmative Action. New policy A C A Equity. Revised policy I M V, Teaching About Controversial Sensitive Issues. And revised policy I M V A, Patriotic Action.
Moving on to committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions? Good information. Very interesting. Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you, is it going to get a motion?
So much.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Now, let's move on to the do we have any comments or questions from the committee?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you for leading the meeting tonight. You did a great job. I also want to offer another word of welcome to Dr. Robinson. I think you're off to a great start. I appreciate your comments in the paper and getting here and there. And it just seems like you're doing a great job in your short time so far. So looking forward to getting to know you better and working with you more closely.
Thank you.
I also just want to say thank you to everybody who's here behind me and in front of me. To come to a meeting in the dead of summer. It's appreciated. I also did want to acknowledge that I know everybody's in the mood to look to the future and look forward, but I didn't, I didn't want the meeting to pass without acknowledging that I thought the previous superintendent's comments in the paper were unfair to our administrators. I think it was unfortunate on the way out and sort of the, the broad shot of it sort of damned them all. And I think that was very unfair, led to speculation in the community about people and personnel, which was unfortunate. And I am in the mood to move forward. I think everybody is, but sometimes to move forward, you also have to lay things out a little bit. And our administration and staff, our teachers are now on their fourth superintendent in five years. We've asked a lot of them in that time. And I think they've done everything we've asked them to do. In the, in the June meeting, we had presentation after presentation about equity issues. They were great presentations, but it was a lot. It was a lot that our administration and teachers have done in the last year or two. And I think that we should be proud of that. And this group should be offering a word of defense in, in times for the administration for doing what we've asked to do. It's been a lot. And if I was working in this school system, just, it's just the way it's been, been through a slew of superintendents, each of whom has been different from each other. And we interact with the staff twice monthly and then in the, in our own kid schools when we see them. And it's easy to lose track, but these are professional, professionals that are serving in a professional capacity and need professional development and need professional encouragement. And I'm ready to move forward, but I thought that that was unfortunate. And it also raised the question to me, why is the school committee hearing of these concerns on the way out as well? We, one of our only real clear black and white tasks is management of the superintendent. So if we're getting this on the way out, when do we get a chance to discuss these things and maybe help mitigate, mediate, brainstorm? There's a lot of wisdom around the table. We, we can help, I think, some of these things. So, anyway, I think I said that I'm ready to move forward. If I didn't, I am. Looking forward to, I'm looking forward to the process. Excited, but so.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, members. Any other comments or questions, right now?
I'm not, I'm moving forward. But I'm not sure if it's the right time to do it, but harking back to the June twelfth meeting, whether it was the presentation. I know the ask at that meeting was to, for the school committee to approve some expenditure of the ARPA funds or A P R, which are funds, COVID funds for recruitment. And I want to make sure that we don't not do something. I'm not a staff member of this, of the Bangor School Committee, I just technically am, but I want to make sure that, that those funds were spent. I didn't see it on the agenda anywhere, so I didn't know when we were to approve it, when we're going to move on on it. But my understanding, and currently my assistant superintendent, is that we need to spend those funds by September thirtieth. So I just want to make sure that the ball's rolling and the people that need to do something for staff, the school district are doing these things. And that we just don't lose free money.
Should be I was asking for an update in the August meeting. On the summer. So for the August meeting, could we get a staff? Yep. We can, thank you. Any other comments? Let's move on to representatives' reports. Do we have any? Okay. And we don't have any student-based update fund information items. Next, important data.
Sarah Lichen, I just have a quick question regarding a student representative. Is, is, can we get verification? Will, will student representatives press the term? And will there be another individual joining in?
Um, we can you comment on that?
Thank you. Member has the one statement.
I understand the process. I assume that superintendent Robinson will want to follow in suit that the idea is that you have a sitting junior and a sitting senior. They rise up and the criterion were pretty clear on the school level. You know, the type of student that we look for. And we have a process where we ultimately select and interview a student, finally select a student. And it's, it's been passed and I've reported that to the superintendent, but I'll take whatever direction is, is set for how we do that. But there is a seat to fill, to my understanding. Sophia, it's understood that the gate that she'll be back for another year. And she, I bet she's terrific.
Yeah, I agree.
All the representatives that we have have different kind of orientation strengths.
Yeah.
It's nice to see them blossom, particularly who I very fond of. I thought he really showed a gear that I didn't really have. So that's a great opportunity for them as well, in the direction of the superintendent on, on how to fill that open seat.
Thank you very much, Dr. Butler. I think it's such an important part of it. Forty-seven. And I'm looking forward to, and I have a very attention to following. Thank you very much.
I'm glad that we took the night off, though, and it's just enjoying.
Thank you very much. So let's get to the important days we've got coming up. Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty-nine, four regular meetings, seventeen, the Bangor High School. Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, the opening of school, AM, South of town. Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty-four, beginning of and Wednesday, September fifth, for regular meetings, seventeen, the Bangor. One more opportunity for
I do. Excuse me for my ignorance. Is opening of schools, is it an event? Is it just that when it opens, school committee members expect to attend? I want to know what it is.
I've been in the past, been in, into, been here several
Yeah, it's a known thing.
I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments. Welcome. It's great to have you on board. I'm really appreciating your consistent and timely communication and responsive expressions that we have. I'm in the mood that everybody else is experiencing that same thing. If there's anything you need, reach out. We want to make sure that you're well supported here, so.
Glad to be here.
Thank you so much.
And so I should continue for a second and say, yeah. Moving on, twice, stage champion debate coach. When I, if that eventually returns to debate. Thank you. So I'm going to move to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
So much.
Second.